So I think it's twenty-five at that time, but the rest of the town parts of McGill are, have been asked to be posted at twenty. So when you come into town, you're on state highway, and that state highway is regulated by the township of McGill. It's the state that's that's being. So what this is, is they asked, came to us, and we talked about it at the last meeting, and the sheriff was here, and I think we passed the posting of twenty mile an hour speed limit in McGill. Am I right, Bill Aldrich?
That's correct. The only, there will be exceptions within this town of McGill, and that'll be for at the parks and school zones, those who remain at fifteen, and then everything else will post. And we'll get with Scott, if his passes, we'll get with Scott for his recommendations for sign placement, so he'll be able to do enforcement. So wherever he's comfortable, so they can enforce this ordinance, that's what we'll get the signs.
Right, and I thought within the residential area that this was for compatibility, so that they were all the same, some were twenty-five, some were twenty.
That's correct. Avenue K downhill to uphill was twenty-five, but if you're on the same street going down, it's fifteen. So it kind of clears up some of the confusion.
Settle in the middle, huh?
What you approve is written.
Motion by Travis and a second by Ian. I'll call for one last comment. If anybody in the public has anything. We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? No. Item three, it's discussion only, it's the second reading of ordinance five oh eight, bill number zero one point two two point two zero two zero, and ordinance amending chapter eight, chapter eight point zero four of the White Pine County Code, repeating the existing regulation that a dog owner must license the animal. This is a second reading and discussion only. We'll be voting on this at the February twenty-sixth meeting. We discussed it at the last meeting at length. Really, I think everybody had an opinion one way or the other. Commissioner Bybee is abstaining from this, and that's okay. So if any other commissioner has any other input they'd like to add at this second hearing, or anybody for the comment, we heard one from the animal control officer, let's hear it now, because we'll be voting on it on the twenty-sixth.
Mr. Chairman, I had a thought that hit me after we were done discussing this, especially after the sheriff was talking about, and then our animal control was talking about the need for rabies vaccinations, we're getting funding for that, all of that stuff. I think, I just was doing some, some fast and loose math, like, the annual income of this is six hundred dollars, and so not even accounting for how much of that might actually be fines that people are receiving, we're looking at, what, thirty, thirty compliant people in the county of ten thousand with dogs, who knows how many there are. And if, and I'm all about solutions, I'm not about, you know, if our goal is, we want to know that our community is safe because people are vaccinating their pets, we want to know that pets are easily identifiable because they have ID tags, as most of us, you know, agree, like, this government is not the solution usually to these kind of things. And so I would suggest, if we did go ahead and repeal this, that we work very closely, have our animal control, whoever needs to be involved, there are so many really great nonprofit organizations out there that I'm sure would be more than happy to come out here and do several drives throughout the year of, hey, come on out, invite the community, get a free vaccination on your pet, get a free ID tag, we can even do the, the injected tags, the chips. But I think that the community would be more likely to come out and do something like that, that is a, a fun event, that is a positive thing, rather than an enforcement that clearly nobody's complying with. That's my perspective, so.
Anyone?
I have not changed my mind, but with that said, I think it's kind of putting the cart for the, before the horse. I think that we probably ought to look into that before this board would vote to rescind it, to see how that would work, where those funds would go, if they did come in. I imagine there has to be some type of fee, and where would, do they stay in White Pine County, or do they go to our local Mr. Hayes, who is animal control, or what? I think that would need to be looked at first.
Yeah, usually, these nonprofit organizations, it's just what they do. They're getting grants, they're getting stuff, and they're traveling home, and they're going out and doing these vaccinations and stuff.
Because I know that, you know, as Mr. Hayes has said, that they're, that they're already getting grants too, but it's not necessarily particular to this. So I think before it's rescinded, I think that that ought to be, not just a crap shoot, you know, to, to know specific, not just think we know, we need to know.
Sure. And Brian, could you get in contact with Mr. Hayes and check up on what he said that he needed as grant funding, exactly what that language is for licensing? I think that would be beneficial to see exactly how, how that works, if there's a, if it's black and white, or if there's another way he can still get that, and don't have to have this. I think that would be helpful in making a decision, as far as the funding side of it goes.
Yeah. If we just, if he's getting funding to do vaccinations, then what we can be doing is doing a better job as a county to hold, like I said, what we can do, we'll hold events and get people out there, getting their pets vaccinated, doing that for free if we need to get that done.
We probably ought to hear from our mayor, who's in the audience.
Thank you, Chairwoman Carson. Just to add another color to this conversation, we have the same problem in the city where there is low compliance with the dog license ordinance at the moment. But I really believe that the best answer to that is outreach and education to the community to get more compliance with this. There has been historically in the past, where we've gone through periods without any animal enforcement, with little animal enforcement, with no outreach on this, and consequently, we're in the position we are today. I, I understand the conversation during the last meeting took on a color of personal freedoms, and government shouldn't get involved, and blah, blah, blah. We've been doing dog licensing for decades. And everybody, you know, pets are not guaranteed by the Bill of Rights, but people should be able to enjoy them. But I should also be able to enjoy a street where I don't get attacked by rabid dogs, I don't live next to unlicensed breeders, I don't live next to noisy neighbors. And these kind of regulations are things that protect everybody's rights. And I think we need to come together as a city and the county and do a better job of outreach and compliance with this, so that we can fund better animal control. Because right now, we're asking Andrew, who is the city's animal control officer, to patrol ten thousand square miles worth of pet owners, which is an uphill battle, to put it mildly. Furthermore, the help that we do get from these nonprofits is contingent upon them seeing that we are doing our best to take care of ourselves, whether there's a regulation or not. Granting agencies don't like to show up and fix other people's problems, they like to show up and be part of a solution that's being, you know, taken care of at the grassroots level. They want to be part of something that's going well. And that's just, just about any granting agency. So I would, I would encourage the, the commission to look at this and look at it maybe in a different light, and see if we can come together on some better outreach, I think, which you suggested Ian has agreed with the idea, doing more community events and outreach, and getting more people to license. It's really the best way to do this. It's not an expensive proposition, ten dollars a year. The city does it every three years, so that it coincides with people's vaccinations, to make sure that these pets, not only are safe for their owners and themselves, but safe for the community. And that's all I've got to say on that. So, thank you.
Oh, Brian, can you confirm that this change, that it wouldn't change the need for rabies vaccination, animals of large, all the other nuisance requirements are still in there, it's just the mere act of physically going up and paying for the license? Am I wrong on?
Yeah, that's correct.
So all those things that our mayor just mentioned would still be enforceable and punishable by law? We're not going miles west here. And to point out, skunks, coyotes, I looked it up, all carry rabies. We have deer running down Main Street constantly. You know, just something to think about.
So my last comment on it, and last decision, but I think staying status quo, the ten dollar fee, I'm not, I'm not really on that. Six hundred dollars is, is not that much money, but to ask the residents of the county to pay a ten dollar fee per year, and have the vaccination for their animals, we have enforcement. And it's easier to have an enforcement officer, because you can call him up. But if you rely on special, some groups, you know, like, like Mr. Bois has identified, hey, that'll be good the first couple of times, and all of us have dealt with that. And then down the road, they've got other things to do. But we control the enforcement, we have an agreement, cooperative agreement with the city. The, the animal control officer spends many hours in Ruth McGill in the outside area. But for ten dollars, to keep this in place is not a lot of money, and it gives us a tool for enforcement. Without it, in the county, we don't have a tool for enforcement.
That's not true, just what Brian, all that stays the same. It's just physically going and buying the license. All the other rules are on the books. They are.
Okay. Well, I'll address them. My, my opinion is different than Commissioner Goddard's. I think asking the county residents to pay the ten dollar fee is, is okay with me, but he may disagree, or somebody else might, but I think asking the county dog owners to pay a ten dollar fee is not out of the ordinary, and that's my opinion. We'll be, we'll be discussing this, and a vote will be taken at the next meeting. And right now, we have any other, it's discussion only, it's a second reading. So we are going to be acting on this. You've heard from each one of us that can vote. Commissioner Bybee has abstained himself from voting, so he may have his opinion, but he's not voicing him because he can't. So anyway, we're going to let this ride, and we'll be voting on this at the next meeting, and if commissioners change their mind or whatever, we'll get a, we'll get a decision made on the twenty-sixth. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
Twenty-six?
Pardon?
Twenty-six?
Is it twenty-six?
It might be the one, first one in March, actually.
It is going to be the twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay.
That's what I thought, so it's the twenty-sixth, so the next meeting. Anyway, with no other comments, we're kind of bandaring it around, and you've heard different comments, so we'll make a decision as a commission, that's the way it should be. Okay, we will move on. If nobody else has anything, I'm going to move on from item three to item four. Item four is discussion only. This is the first reading of a proposed ordinance five oh nine, bill number zero two point one two point two zero two zero, amending chapter two point three two of the White Pine County Code, clarifying the Regional Planning Commission's lack of authority to dispose of government property, defining appropriate governing body, specifying appeal procedure. Mike, do you guys have another?
Yeah, it's just a, it was just a tune-up. As we, as the Regional Planning Commission is, is moving forward, we wanted to make sure that a citizen couldn't come in and say, hey, I want you to ban this parcel, and it's the county's parcel. And we had given them so much authority to regulate and set zoning and do other things like that. So we're just kind of clarifying some of those duties and appeal procedures. And then the next step is, if the commission approves this ordinance, we'll have the city approve something similar, so that they are also likewise protected, because the ordinance has to be the same, the city and the county can have effect. So this is the first reading, we can take a couple, not a couple comments, but if it can answer your questions. But I think it's pretty self-reliant.
Anybody have anything for Districts Trump? Anybody?
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. That was the first reading. Okay, we'll move on. We've got, caught, caught up. Very good. We are on page three, item, yeah, it's a little after ten, perfect. Page three, item C, it's a ten o'clock public hearing, CVBG. Item one is a public hearing, discussion for possible action, public hearing number three, on final ranking of applications for funding under next fiscal years, July first, two thousand twenty, to June thirty of two thousand twenty-one. State Community Block, State Community Development Block Grant, CVBG program, based on prior public hearings and feedback from CVBG staff. Following public input at the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners will determine in the final ranking of projects. Elizabeth.
Thank you. In the, in our previous two public hearings, we discussed projects including relining the McGill Sewer Pines, addressing issues for the McGill Sleigh Ditch, opening a facility for homeless veterans in McGill, assisting with a heating system for Veterans Rehab Facility in McGill, a new skateboard park in Ely, and a new park adjacent to the Aquatic Center in Ely. After having vetted these with the, the CVBG grant staff, the only two of these projects that actually qualify under the, the current regulations governing CVBG would be the McGill Sewer Pines and the McGill Sleigh Ditch. So, and the county can put two projects forward, and so it is a recommendation that you approve those two projects to be the two that we submit applications for. And I welcome any feedback and questions that you might have. Both of these will be planning grants, McGill Sewer Pines required to relining, and so this would be a preliminary engineering study to figure out what that project will look like. The same thing with the McGill Sleigh Ditch, we're looking at mediating the problems that exist with that ditch, and this will be an engineering study to determine the scope of that project.
Should we prioritize them one and two, or should we just make a, just make a motion to approve both?
You can go ahead, and they should be ranked, so you can rank them in either direction, but we'll be submitting both.
Sewer Pines are probably most important, eh?
That would be my thought.
All right, I move. We'll put Sewer Pines number one, Sleigh Ditch number two, and McGill, since those are the only two items that are in compliance with this.
And prior to, prior to actually voting on that motion, a second from Lori, I just heard, it's a public hearing, so the public's allowed to make a comment.
Okay, it is a public hearing, so you've heard what we're getting ready to act on. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a statement on the CVBG funding? Anyone? You're free to come up, and looking around, last call. Hearing none, seeing none. We have a motion and a second, a motion by Travis and a second by Lori. Any other question on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? No. Thank you. Okay, ten fifteen, so we got a few minutes. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back, and there's a ten fifteen public hearing. We're going to try to get this meeting rolling again, so we can go back into session, and the next item on here is our ten fifteenth, we just ran it, perfect. So ten fifteen, there's a public hearing, Snipoma. This public, item one on page three, by the way, is public hearing, discussion for possible action. Public hearing on reevaluation and final ranking of Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, Snipoma, round eighteen project priorities, including possible amendments to the existing projects, and consideration of new projects based on feedback from Snipoma staff and prior public hearings. Following the public input at the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners will determine the final ranking of the projects. Elizabeth Francis.
We want to wait for Ms. Park.
Yeah, we could wait for Lori for a moment.
We'll wait for Lori, so. I don't want to read that again. I'm going to shake.
Elizabeth Green, how much you ready?
Good. I didn't hear about that. I was going to say, I was going to say, I was going to say.
I didn't hear about that.
I didn't hear about that. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say. I was going to say, I was going to say.
That's awesome.
He has teacher working on his.
Yeah, that sounds like fresh.
He's doing binder.
Good.
Yeah, I haven't seen Dean surf for days.
Yeah, he stops in my office every day, and he looked at, I was out of town.
And Sherry's coming Thursday.
Oh, is she going to come on?
She's coming.
Dr. Joel Mar, he's coming.
This is a big thing.
Yeah, it's going to be huge, man. Yeah, Mary's out there.
Yeah.
It's going to be.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Yeah, I see.
It's a twenty-second, I haven't heard that.
Yeah, it's a Christmas. You've been going through a lot.
But she did. But she wanted to go.
That is, you know what?
See, there's a lot worse things than dying. She was home.
Good, good.
Okay, we're back. I read the, I read the item.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, Elizabeth, I asked you if you do take this over for me?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chairman. White Pine County has received, heard and ranked Snipoma round eighteen projects. However, in a meeting with Bob and Michelle from Snipoma last December, Tabitha and I learned that they're looking for larger projects, and that we should consider expanding the scope of the projects that we were looking at. And so to this end, we have requested at the last meeting to reopen this, this round of projects, so that people can resubmit new ideas on expanding their projects, as well as allowing other projects to be heard at this time. So, and we just received word once again that round eighteen is going to be delayed yet further. So this gives us a good deal of time then to develop these new project proposals that you will be ranking today. And so I know that we have several projects that, and people who are here to present, I did ask people to come in and have a presentation for you, a short presentation on their project proposals, so that you can see what their ideas are, their concepts are, for both the existing ones that are being changed, and the new ones that are being proposed. So I'd like to go ahead, and the first one that we have, I believe that's here, is the Ely Downtown Project, which was your number one ranked project from the last round. So I don't know if someone from Ely is here.
Okay, and before, before we start.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, does it start?
I think they wanted the railroad to go first, where they, that's what they were discussing.
But I just want to kind of set some ground rules real quick, and I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. We've got a lot of proposals here, and we're, we're asking you, we can't limit how much time. Normal public comment is three minutes, we're just asking you if you can condense your presentation as short as you can. We're not going to say stop at three minutes, because that's not what we do. But we would like you to think about it as your turn comes forward, and you kind of condense your presentation, because we've got several to do with. And with that being said, and what the DA asked, we are going to call the railroad first.
You can pass those along. Good morning, everyone, and thank you very, very much for this opportunity. in the E C U yard, with buildings on the verge of collapse and everything, and that really concerned me. And then one of our longtime volunteers came in and said, Mark, what are you going to do about the Ely, or the McGill Depot? And of course, my question is, where's the McGill Depot? Oddly enough, it's in McGill. And so I went, went up to McGill and took a look at it, and it was on the verge of becoming the McGill pile of rocks. And through other grant programs, we have been able to stabilize that building, and we're getting very close to being opening it to the public. One of the things that we wanted to do is put the track back into service to McGill. And to do that, we have three railroad crossings to get into there. The Club Fifty Crossing and the Pole Line Crossing would be the crossings. We've already rebuilt the Club Fifty Crossing, the Pole Line Crossing would have to be rebuilt, and that's about a two million dollar project. And then getting into McGill itself, there's about three crossings in there, and they're probably around fifty thousand dollars apiece, plus we have additional track work to do there, too. The, the history of the railroad has served as a transportation system for the county, and as you all know, the track still exists. And so what we're, the railroad is a national historic landmark, and what we'd like to do with Snipoma's help is expand it into an actual heritage corridor. One of the issues that we have right now with four-wheelers, ATVs, motorcycles, is they're using the railroad right-of-way as ways to get out to the open land. And one of the things that we want to do as part of the rehab of track into McGill is actually build a trail parallel to the track, so ATVs, bicyclists, and everyone can safely ride parallel to the track, and that removes a life safety issue. We have had a couple of very near misses. The trains don't stop. Eventually, they'll stop, but they won't stop in time to avoid a critical accident. So, the other thing that we've done, too, with the National Park Service, is we started our Star Trains. And as part of the Star Trains, we actually, working with tour and rec, built a star pad up by the industrial road crossings. The Star Trains play to a massive strength in the community, and that's our dark skies. We just take them for granted. We go outside and look up, and go, yeah, stars. About sixty percent of the people in the United States don't have that, where they can't see the stars. And starting about five years ago, we worked with Great Basin National Park to start the Star Trains. And we did five trains a year. Last year, we were very, very fortunate. We were covered by CBS This Morning, we were covered by NBC out of Las Vegas, we had stories in the L.A. Times, Travel Plus Leisure, and if you go to County Nash Traveler Español, or España, you'll see there's a story in there in Spanish on the Star Trains in White Pine County. As part of this, we have a depot up at Curry that is an original depot to the railroad. Snipoma is very big into historic preservation. So what we want to do is bring that depot from Curry and actually put it next to the star pad. And if you take a look at the last drawing in, in the packet, what will we do with that is put the depot there. Right now, the Star Trains go up there, and we're there for about three hours. The only restrooms are on the train. So we would use the depot sort of as our star center. We would put restrooms in there, we would do interpretation on the night skies. And the other thing is, we could develop a star program for that area without bringing the trains up there. And all of the publicity that we received last year, we went from five trains a year to eighteen trains a year. All eighteen trains sold out last August. And there is this tremendous demand for people coming to White Pine County and seeing the stars. So this really dovetails quite nicely with what Snipoma does. We have outdoor recreation there, we have historic preservation, and it would be a massive asset to our community. And then the second to the center page there is the idea for the McGill complex. In opening the track to the McGill Depot, we wind up with a dead-end line. We, the locomotives would have to shove back. The railroad had, or railroads had what they call a turntable, and that is that tall structure just to the left of the depot. And you'll notice that there's a little arm pointing up in the drawing. And that is called an Armstrong turntable. And when we say Armstrong, we mean people get out and using their arms, they turn the turntable with the locomotive on it. If we were to incorporate that in there, we have a run-around track where the passengers that rode the train up there, we can encourage them to help us turn the locomotive. And the city of San Francisco does that with the cable cars. So it's not an original idea. So we actually want to phase this, the first phase, and again, on the cover sheet, the first phase is to open up the track to McGill and develop a trail system that runs parallel to the track, and also installing crossings for off-road vehicles. Right now, the off-road vehicles just cross essentially anywhere, and they have dangerous up. of getting hung up. And then also to move the Curry Depot down and create the Start Depot there. That's the first phase. The second phase is to do the trail and tie it into Roof, and also restore the passing siding up at Roof, the Ork Tipples, and then also build a depot there at Roof. And then the final phase is improvements to the East Ely Yard, restoring the polling tower, rebuilding the water tank and general building repairs. When the railroad, when Canacat closed down 30 years ago, and the community thought that the railroad could be the new economic generator, and that it would bring money into the community. Over the past 30 years, we have done exactly that. We have had over 300,000 people ride the trains. We keep, we keep track of every passenger ticket sold. We also have had another 300,000 people who just visit the railroad and don't ride the train. These people have brought in, over the course of the past 30 years, about $80 million that has been spent in our state and our community. With the experience that we've had with the Star Trains, we're gonna be bringing more and more people to Ely and White Pine County. And the situation that we've had, over the course of the past 30 years, we've been nickel and diming the improvements to the railroad. This gives us an opportunity to make a massive investment in the railroad, in our community, and actually take our tourism up to the next level. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
I do. Two things, where these are historic. Shippeau is gonna have to be contacted.
Yes, and we've contacted them.
Okay, I didn't know if that had been done already. And also, your, your off-road trail. What distance do you anticipate that being from the rail line itself?
It depends on the area. Our right-of-way there is about 100 feet, so we have about 50 feet on either side of the track. It's probably, you know, 20, 30 feet away from the track. The other situation that we have is because the motorcycles and ATVs are running down right parallel to the track, they're destroying our ballast there. And we just did a $1.3 million track improvement project, and the vast majority of that was for ballast and tamping. And again, we still have this problem with the ATVs, and they knock the ballast away from the ties, which then upsets the tie infrastructure, and then the track starts creeping.
Correct, correct. Okay, so, and then, so some of the outline area is BLM?
Well, actually, all of it's on the railroad right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah.
But past the right-of-way?
Well, we would coordinate with BLM.
Where I'm going with this is that Snipoma loves partnerships.
Oh, yes.
We're talking about McGill, we're talking about city, we're talking about BLM. I just, that's, that's great.
As a hobby, I do off-roading in California, and I was out by Ridgecrest, and BLM has marked all of the trails, and they have a map. And the trail map matches the markings out on the land, which is a good thing. But we, we could do the same, the same thing here, because right now, all of the trails are unmarked. In fact, we're working with Tour and Rec this coming summer, where we have a new program where bicyclists will be able to purchase a ticket and take their bike on the train. At the end of the route, they can get off the train and ride their bicycle back to town. So we're going to start marking trails to allow them to do that.
And that's included in your presentation when you present it to Snipoma, not nine of your work.
Yes, exactly.
What we're trying to do here, thank you very much.
Okay.
We're trying to condense it and make sure everybody gets their time. What was the previous ranking for this project? Was it number two?
This was number two. And your estimated cost on this at this point is?
Somewhere around 12 to 16 million dollars.
For all three phases?
For all three phases.
Okay.
What about phase one?
Phase one, somewhere around eight to 10 million dollars.
That's higher than we talked.
Pardon?
I said, that's higher than we talked.
Well, we did a little more research, too.
Okay.
But again, we, we are very good at stretching the dollar. So whatever we can do, we'll make it work.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the second one, who wants to give me first, is the tour.
All right, well, actually, this is a, this is a new project that is a collaboration project that I think is very exciting, because the project itself has the ability to change the look and the feel and the function of Ely and White Pine County for its citizens and for its visitors. So we're in a, we're in a good time right now, where we're faced with a lot of expansion and growth opportunities, both in housing and business and redevelopment and everything like that. And regardless of where your loyalty is for that expansion, the truth is, is that the areas south of town, where that Loves gas station, the new judicial center, Wheeler Power, all of that, is, is where a lot of the new growth is gonna go. The other truth is, is that downtown is gonna be the other center of economic development. It has to be. There's no way that the downtown can continue to function. In the state, it is. So with the work that the Main Street community is doing, and with tourism, you know, you've got two areas that are prime and positioned to go ahead and grow. And the troubles that we're having right now are great troubles for the community. So if you were to talk to any city planner that was looking at a 50-year plan of growth and expansion, they would say, lead with park. Lead with your parks. Create a hub for green space, for gathering, for accessibility, so that you can ensure in the midst of growth that is not unmanaged, and all of a sudden, you wake up one day and you've got urban sprawl, and you're caught with neighborhoods with no amenities and no accessibility, so now you have user conflict. So what this project is proposing is creating a cultural and recreation corridor with the creation and redevelopment of two parks that are strategically placed in the community that utilize existing on-road and off-road routes that connect neighborhoods, schools, businesses together, and ensure that as we grow, because we will grow, that we'll have a community that'll have amenities that are modern, contemporary, and function for what the community needs. So what we're talking about here is recreational facilities, transportation alternatives, accessibility for kids, for seniors, students, you name it, it's all in the proposal. And the two parks themselves, because they're passion projects of my two co-presenters, I'm gonna let them go ahead and talk about the merits of the projects themselves. What you can see in the notes that I've given out is kind of the benefits of parks to a community, and I think the main one we need to recognize is, is that any, any property adjacent to a, to a park immediately increases on average about 20% in its property value. And so that, that unto itself, in addition to the health and wellness and social and all that stuff right there, should be one of the main factors of why we should consider this as a prioritization. So I'm gonna come back after the individual presentations and tie it all together on why this really connects the community as a whole, as opposed to just being individual parks that we're piecemealing or patchworking as we go from the community. So I'll let my co-presenters come up and talk about the merits of each one of their parks and how they complement each other, and then I'll come back at the end and wrap it up.
I handed out a packet that has my, my office, you have it on it? Do you have that? And what I'm handing out now, there's one available for, actually, you already have one, is a letter of support from the Inishon Tribe about the development of the property adjacent to Loves. I think that's the same letter you already have in your packet as well, so I'll just put this in there. And that'll become relevant in a second. You all have maps as well, and this is a large map. And so what I want to do is talk about, real quick, the reason why. And then I'll get Nate up here to talk about the Broadbent idea. So what Mr. Horbach was speaking to is leading in development, economic development, changing the culture of our community in a post-mining era. Everyone here at this table knows that we're saving money, and we're trying to plan and diversify our economy and increase development and investment in our communities so that we can survive over the next 100 years. As you travel along the west of the United States, the communities that thrive the most have a strong downtown and a strong recreational element of a healthy lifestyle and culture. People running, biking, snowboarding, equestrian, hunting, whatever it is. So we have a broken record in this community over the last, I don't know, 50 years since Canacat left. We need to do something different and radical to change the culture of this community, so we can change the appearance of this community. We have almost 10,000 people or more driving through our community every day, going north to south. We have people cross-country coming through on Highway 50. What's the first thing they see when they come into town? Not much. A gas station, the updated buildings. This project, by putting these two parks together, and one project for Snipoma, gives Snipoma exactly what they want. A large, comprehensive, culture-changing product, round, project that emphasizes trails, green space, culture, and completely changes the look of our community coming in. If you come in from Las Vegas, what you see on your map right there, what the public can see, is there's a pull-through parking area right adjacent to the highway. So all those RVs, the little yapper dogs, can stop, use a restroom facility. There's a dog park planned in this park, so they can let them out, they can keep it clean. And our community, when I run this idea around in our community, there is a large interest in having a dog park. The other amenities, I mean, they're listed here, there's like 18 amenities in the park up by Loves, and before we talk about what Broadbent's gonna have. It's gonna be have a one-mile paved illuminated walking trail that's off the highways and dirty roads, so that you can run, walk, or bike in peace and safety. There's gonna be trees, benches, several covered picnic pavilions, play structures. But most importantly, and what Snipoma's concerned about, is there's gonna be trail heads for the mountain bike trails, and the complex that the Forest Service is doing a separate Snipoma process to develop those mountain bike trails in Ward Mountain. It's an amazing resource. And we want to be able to collect, like a, like a, like a net, all the individuals passing through our community, they're already stopping at that corner. Loves is one of the most successful Loves they've had in the state, not the west, and they didn't think it was gonna be that big, but it's strategically placed, because there's so much distance south and north of us. You're gonna be able to stop families, I mean, all those passers, passerby in the motor and public, and be able to have kiosks and information centers that direct them to downtown, direct them to the events that we're putting on, to Great Basin National Park, to Ward Mountain, to our trails, to direct them about the beautiful culture that we have and our history and our traditions here in White Pine County. It's, it's just sizzling, ready to pop. This community has everything that the other successful communities in the west have. We just need to be able to market it. By putting a big show up there at that park about our railroad and the dark skies and the star program, and our different races and our other events, that's how you get even more people who normally would come through town and go, "Let's just blow through Ely as fast as..." I'm being blunt. Okay, you come into town, you'd see McGill, and you're like, "Let's get through here as fast as we can." Stop and get your gas at this gas station, and keep moving till we get to civilization. Everyone knows it. We need to have more pride in our community and brand ourselves differently. That's what this is seeking to do, by putting these two parks together at Broadbent and at the new county location. There's a letter of support from the property owner, that they're willing to partner with us, and they're gonna work on giving a appraisal to see what their property's worth. We approached the White Pine County School District, they support this plan as well for obvious reasons. Everyone sees the high school kids, kids crossing that dirt lot to get to the corner. This will give them a safe place to enjoy their lunch. You have all the families traveling to our community for sports, and they have all those kids with them. And there's also a lot of downtime between activities. Having the park right there will give them additional resources. I've incorporated Nicole Baldwin's Skate Park, it's an excellent idea, on top of our currently-owned skate park. It'd be part of a Snipoma grant to resurrect that and put a real amenity in. I mean, there's something for everyone at this park. Now, I know what you're thinking, we build another park, and this conservative board is thinking, "That means more positions, more taxpayer dollars want to maintain this place." Yes, that's true. You're gonna have to likely create another position to maintain this park. What I have secured through talking with the tribe and securing their support, is they want to help be part of the planning, because it's their neighborhood as well, and they want to open up, take down fences and open up to one community, and develop their horse corrals, and have a question trail, and have their grass roll right into ours, and they want to partner with us with some of the maintenance and other cost sharing and matching. But we have to get down that road first. So that is also what Snipoma's looking for, is those partnerships with other agencies to build those bridges. You have to invest a little bit to create a valuable market, where an developer's gonna want to come in and put in a hundred-house unit across the street from this park. You look at St. George and some of these other communities that have just been blowing up over the last few years, they're building around parks. And it's, it's kind of a progressive idea for a conservative community. But if you want to see actual, real change, we're gonna have to invest and take a step to do something radically different. One of the things that's not in this park is a performing arts amplifier, a splash pad, ice skating rink, and all those other amenities that are gonna go at Broadbent Park, you're gonna hear about in a second, because that fits more of the downtown scene. And you can see how they complement each other. The pass, the public that stops in the pull-through parking to get their lunch and let their dogs out or play, and let the kids out of the backseat of the car after a six-hour drive from Washington or Boise, they're gonna know and learn about our downtown. They're gonna know and learn about our train, our indigenous culture that long, that was here long before any of the development was. Lehman caves in the park, this is a way to bring people and advertiser community, because that is where the corridor is. You can put as many signs as you want down the street, and it's not gonna direct someone who's on their way to Vegas to go downtown, just to kind of look around. If they're already stopped here, and you show off what we have, they'd be a lot more interested on their way back, or maybe the next time through, to spend a little bit at our restaurants or at our other facilities. So anyway, there's a, you have your maps? This is just a large map.